Good evening. We have a forum. We'll call a filing board meeting to order. First up, our general information is Melissa Teft.
Hi.
Yeah, Melissa Teft from 112 Stockbridge Street. And I'm asking for a permit to move my business, my psychotherapy business, to my home.
Okay. Really? There's one or two copies?
There's two envelopes for each person.
Okay, so you don't have any?
Three of Butters, and I got the assessors.
December 18th. Everybody gonna be here?
February 18th?
No, December. I'm on to tonight.
Yeah, me and one, I got surgery from his spine.
I'll be here.
We're having a meeting on January 1st.
Jimmy, it's far enough away from my Stockbridge land, so I'll be here and I can vote.
He wants to be out two months.
We won't be meeting on January 1st, so otherwise it's going to be January 15th.
You want to do this immediately?
What's that?
Immediately?
Well, I would like to do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've talked with the Butters, there's three of them, and they're fine with it.
So why can't we just meet earliest meeting in December? We don't need a...
Because the earliest we can meet is the earliest we can meet and qualify by the law and state law. Location is the eight days.
That's fine for me.
Do you run this business anywhere else?
Yeah, I'm in North Hampton right now. I've been a psychotherapist for 30 years. I've been 15 years on Sylvester's, well, Sylvester's in North Hampton.
What makes you move out of there?
Um, just, well, I'm getting a little older. I want to move home. And I'm going to work full-time for another year or two, but then cut back later.
There's the date of the hearing. Pay this to the town clerk without a mouth. With that application.
Leave the entire set with her.
Right.
So I go to town hall?
So you go to town hall with your check for the filing fee. Give her the entire set, and then the legal notice will say if anybody wants to see the application, it's available at the town clerk's office. And that's how you make it available, by bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you. Seen Jeffords?
Sean.
Jefford?
Sean.
Sean, I'm sorry.
It spells a funny way. So Sean Jeffords, I own Beyond Green Construction. We operate out of East Hampton, Mass. We do green building, energy efficiency, solar energy. 10 Rocky Hill Road is for sale. I asked what type of presentation. They didn't say to bring anything, so I don't have a bunch of copies. But I do have the owner's original as far as the plot. I've spoken to the building inspector and a few others in the town hall. And it seems like there was a little bit of confusion as far as the current zoning, the use, whether it's pre-existing, non-conforming, what we might be able to do with the building.
Where's 10 Rocky Hill Road?
It's the old Gennodick's building.
That's zoned agriculture residential.
Right. And so currently, the building, zoned agriculture residential.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to check in as far as what would you guys like to see a building of that design used for, given that it really doesn't fit that kind of a...
It's a former farm stand.
Right.
So how big is your business?
How big is it? We have about 10 employees.
Are you trying to move your business there?
Yeah, we're trying to move it there. We were also thinking about, I have somebody that's interested in running a farm stand in combination with it.
So they got approved under what's called the agricultural exemption to Chapter 48, which says that a farm stand, if you're basically selling your own product, there's a confusing formula, but you can run a business in a district that doesn't allow businesses if it is an agricultural business. So I don't believe that that grandfathering extends to anything else. And it's been out of business for a while, so it's basically a residential property.
He asked me to pass this along from the board of health?
How many, what do you have for vehicles and equipment and stuff like that?
We have several trailers and a couple of pickup trucks depending on...
You, to qualify that for a home occup, are you going to live there?
We weren't planning, it's not really...
You need to live, you, the owner, needs to live there to qualify for home occupation, home business. Okay, otherwise you need a zone change from the town meeting.
Okay, the current building, and this plot plan says that it is business zone? That's where it's...
No, it is not business zone.
Okay. So basically, the existing building and him trying to get any value out of it, you know, there's no residential property currently there. What type of guidelines would apply?
How many acres are there? A farm stand is the only...
One and a third or so?
A farm stand is the only permitted business at that site.
If it was residentially occupied?
It doesn't need to be residentially occupied. Okay, a farm stand is a permitted use under Chapter 48. There's an exemption for, according to state law. Any other business use, the owner would need to live on that property.
Okay. And under the, is there any kind of criteria for the farm stand that I could look up online? Or just trying to determine?
Chapter 48.
Chapter 48.
Look on the master laws, Chapter 48. I've got exactly what section it is, but it gives you reference to farm stands in there. And then that directs you to another area that describes agriculture.
Okay. Just because the other piece was just trying to determine, you know, it's really difficult to make a living on farmland these days, especially because it's such a small season, and wondering, you know, the winter months being close to 50% of the time, is there anything that could be piggybacked along with that, like a little coffee cafe kind of setting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Again, that is all defined under Master, Chapter 48. And if you look at farm stands, there are three farm stands in Hadley that sell food. And Sugar Shack in North Hadley is a farm stand exemption, except they are in limited business zones. There's a little bit of a difference.
Doesn't qualify for the exemption as it's now written anyway, because that has to be five acres, I think.
Not if it's a farm stand. I believe there's a farm, look up in the Chapter 48. I don't...
I think it's Section 3, 48, Section 3.
Yeah. And it describes about a farm stand, about some sort of the goods need to be grown within the state of Massachusetts, not necessarily on your farm, on your property. Like you can buy for somebody else as long as they're grown within the state.
Right, because that's the other tricky thing, is it's not even a very large garden area.
How deep is it?
Three hundred feet.
Yeah, probably something like that.
You're not even going to be eligible to grow marijuana there.
Not much, you know?
Yeah. So this sketch is incorrectly calling this business zone. It was a business use, but it was an exemption. So that does not continue, does not go with the land.
Yeah, Mr. Gennodick did go to town meeting to get a business zone rezoned on that property, but it failed.
It failed?
Okay.
All right.
With the, with a five acre exemption, I know it does apply to 61A, which gives a reduced tax relief to farmland, but it may dovetail into that, well, it's actually under the Dover Amendment of all things.
No, that one doesn't.
No, it's not, it's not a Dover amendment, but that's nothing, Dover Amendment has nothing...
You guys with this Dover?
And so a property like that, if a residential building were to be built, it could be located without connecting to the farm stand itself?
This has to be connected. This has to be on the same parcel.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
All right.
What is your business? Is it listed as agriculture use?
Uh, no, not this business anyways. I was looking to, see my daughter's looking to start a little business, so we were looking to kind of go in on it. We don't actually need that much space. We were looking at it more like a showroom opportunity, because we already have an 8,000 square foot production facility in East Hampton. So it was more just trying to, you know, piggyback along with that, because the price that he's looking for is kind of steep for, you know, what it currently is and the limitations and...
Yeah, because there's a, there's, there's a, on South Maple Street, there's a Cook Flavors Farm that sells food, sells agricultural products as well as ice cream and other things.
Barstow's.
Barstow's up in, no, up the road in Hockenham. And Sugar Shack in North Hadley. Sugar Shack in North Hadley, like I said, is in a limited business zone, so there's a little bit of a fuzzy area there, but the other two are strictly agriculture residential. And they're located on farmland, not at agricultural property.
And do you know offhand what kind of limitations would come along with the different foods that are offered along with it?
It's all in the statute.
It's a very complex formula based on whether you're selling products that you grow on the same site, products you grow on other land you own, or products you buy wholesale from other Massachusetts farmers. And there are various percentages that...
I see, I see.
...qualify you for.
It is, it is, it is not clear.
It's a good read.
It's a difficult read, yeah. It's a good field to call it that. It'll take some time to read it and try to digest what it all means.
But you could come here and make the pitch. And we send out letters to Butters, and if there's objections, then that's where your rope bombs are going to come.
Well, we're not even going to send out letters. We're not even going to accept an application for something that's not allowed in the district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, a farm stand with some associated uses, if it's agricultural, is one thing, but to put a business on there, it's a whole other story. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
We've got a couple minutes. Let's see, we do have a bill from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for $1,347.37 for services from July through the end of September.
Hmm, that's part of the contract?
Yeah, part of the contract, yeah. That's their, the one they've been doing with the marijuana.
How far are the internet?
This was, well, the beginning of the fiscal year is...
July 1st.
July 1st, so this is the first quarter. $1,347.37.
And we have $7,500 on that line.
Right.
So they're barely, not even a half.
Not even a quarter.
Not even a quarter. I'll make a motion to pay Pioneer Valley Planning Commission $1,347.37.
Second?
All in favor in this session? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes. For some reason, we had two. We got a meeting, a notice from FEMA that they are conducting a Federal Emergency Management Agency Upcoming Risk Mapping Assessment. One meeting will be held on the 27th of November at 1:30 to 3:30 in Turner's Falls, and the other one on the 28th of November from 10 to noon at the Jones Library in Amherst. If anybody's interested.
What's the one in Hadley?
43 Y M Street in Amherst, and one is the, the first one is in Turner's Falls.
What's that all to do with?
Connecticut?
The flood map.
Flood map.
That's updating of the flood, right?
So when's it in Turner's Falls?
The first one is the 27th from 1:30 to 3:30. And then the 28th at the Jones Library, it's 10 to 12 noon. Let's see. This is about feces. It's a risk map. Helps communities identify, assess, and reduce their flood risk by combining quality engineering with updated flood hazard data. What are they actually going to do?
You're choosing the flood maps for insurance.
So that's December or January, Jim?
November.
November, wow.
Next week.
Next week. Yeah, what is 21st?
27th, Tuesday? Monday and Tuesday? Tuesday and Wednesday?
28th is a Wednesday?
28th is a Wednesday. I might try going to the Wednesday one.
I might try going to. I think we have to RSVP.
Well, there's a questionnaire on this thing. I just got this, it was in our mailbox. Who can have the meeting?
Does David Nixon, are you familiar with this?
Yes, I got an invitation to save a few. I also had a previous conversation with them. They're looking at redoing the flood insurance maps in order to take into account changing climatological conditions. They've also been using new modeling forecasting tools in order to spot up 100 and 500-year flood in the Connecticut River Valley. So this is something to pay attention to. I'll try to avail myself of some of the training. More information on right now.
Are you filling out the attached questionnaire for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So please.
Was there RSVP on this?
Yeah, there was something on the bottom of the first page.
Okay. Kind of unusual that they don't include Hadley in this, because you have the greatest exposure to flooding.
When it's flooded, when it's flooding anywhere in the valley, it's all flooding, and then Hadley first.
General information, there is a finance committee meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at a town hall to discuss their usual finance stuff, whatever they're talking about. Usual building budget processes, next year's budget already. Is all I have for general information that we have about that.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. And with that, we'll reopen the public hearing, or continue the public hearing of the senior center and library. Mr. Attorney Reedy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney at Baker Wilson over in Amherst here on behalf of the senior center and the library on this continued public hearing for site plan review, special permit, and the erosion and sediment control permit. So last, we were here a couple of months ago. We went away with some homework. We had a very productive discussion, and we also got some guidance from the select board. And essentially, that guidance was to reduce the size of the senior center, which we've done. And that in turn has impacted the parking, and I'll go through those numbers in a moment. And then we also wanted to put a finer point on emergency access. And so we've also relocated or received a relocated easement from the American Legion. And so the easement, as shown on the plan, is actually where the easement is located now. As you'll recall, it was over where those parking spaces were, but it has been shifted to the east. So when we're looking at the senior center, originally the proposal was for 12,098 square foot senior center. That is now reduced to 10,350 square feet. The library originally was 12,142 square feet, has not, was redesigned throughout the process to 11,635 square feet. That has not changed since the last meeting. So combined, the senior center and the library are 21,985 square feet. As far as parking was concerned, previously, the senior center had a design that had outdoor seating, and I think it's the Eslon rule, where you're counting that outside patio for the parking lot, for that two-to-one parking ratio. That patio has been eliminated in addition to the square footage that I mentioned. So previously, we were required to provide 49,622 square feet. Currently, with this new design, we're required to provide 43,970 square feet. And in fact, we provide 44,751 square feet. So we're completely compliant with that two-to-one parking ratio. And then, as I mentioned, we also have put a finer point on that easement relocation. For good measure, we sent the plans over to Berkshire Design to take a look at the parking. You should have in your packets their response confirming that the parking complies. And then we also asked them to take a look at the stormwater and make sure that that was satisfactory. And you should also have in your packet that response saying, yes, it is satisfactory. We're happy to get into as much detail as you want on the plans, but I just wanted to give you the Reader's Digest version of what we've done in the interim.
Question regarding the easement over the Legion land. You do have, the town has, how many feet?
30 feet in width.
Has there been any added to that 30 feet to...
No, so what happened was the, the original easement was all the way to the west of the Legion property where the parking is. And effectively, and that was 30 feet wide, so if you started at the westerly property line, came out 30 feet.
Correct. And then there was some added in one of the plans to the east of that easement?
So I'm not exactly sure. It might have looked like we were adding some, but what we've effectively done, Mr. Zabradnik, is taken it and shifted it over. So that 30 feet still exists, but instead of being over that parking, it has been shifted east. So that now, if you'll follow, the westerly edge of that easement is now at the former easterly edge of what the easement was. And so the 30 feet, it lines up better with where the curb cut actually is on Route 9.
But in effect, you're taking Legion land to move it?
No, so, no, so instead of, one of the things, so the town had the right-of-way over the Legion land to begin with.
How many feet?
30 feet.
You're correct.
And instead of saying, well, we want another 30 feet for a 60-foot total.
You did, once upon a time.
We shifted it, so there's only 30 feet in width. And so effectively, that easement as it existed on the westerly side has been abandoned because it's been relocated to the east.
This plan was put in our box by the town administrator's assistant. This was right-of-way. This is new right-of-way.
All right.
And the Legion now, this reverts to the Legion. The 30 feet is now right down the middle of the parking lot rather than along the edge.
This makes a whole lot more sense, because before they were taking 30 feet of parking. Now they're putting 30 feet in where there was a roadway, and the park, Legion can still use this as parking. They've essentially done a better job for the Legion.
Has the Legion agreed to that?
They have.
Okay.
Is there any barriers between the easterly side of the...
Of the right-of-way and the balance of the Legion parking lot?
Is that a barrier there?
No, that is, that is only to show the demarcation of that 30-foot right-of-way.
What is that going to be, either just blacktop and painted lines?
Yeah, I don't think that's the layout.
Yeah, I don't even know if there would be painted lines on that easterly side. I don't think you would be able to distinguish a difference of where that actually is.
I started in the memorandum of understanding that they were going to strike that whole lot for the Legion?
No, not the senior center project.
No.
No, the town is going to...
That part.
Yeah, so we're going to strike the row parking that's on the west side of their property. Got a Butts, Mr. Coaches' property. So those 11 parking spaces, that's going to be part of the senior center project.
This is curious. The, I see the fire chief isn't here. Usually, we ask for two entrances for the fire truck. He seems to want three now. Why? I mean, is there any legitimate reason?
I don't think he views the one-way out as a second.
They always go one way down Route 9 even, so it's not a hindrance.
Yeah, I think he views this as the second means of entrance.
So John, to your question, that says there is going to be a gate at the...
No, I'm not talking about...
At the westerly property line.
I'm talking about...
Sign lights to leave.
Going north and south, but on the easterly border of that easement.
Nothing in the written agreement or on the drawing that says there's anything except painting and blacktop.
Oh, what are you looking at? The memorandum of understanding?
The easement, this is the easement relocation agreement.
Okay, then there's this on top, the memorandum of understanding.
Well, this is the, I believe, this is what gets, this is copied and registered needs.
Yes, I mean, if I could...
That's specific to the easement itself.
Correct. And I think what Mr. Michkowski is talking about is a separate, because there was a lawsuit filed by the Legion, I believe that there's a memorandum of understanding, pardon me, between the Legion and the town, which is what I would consider separate and distinct from this approval process, though it is still binding upon the Legion and the town.
So what's your question, John? Is it being complied with? Has it been signed?
No. I was just worried that there was some kind of barriers between that, where that 30-foot easement to the east ended and the other rest of the Legion parking lot.
No, there won't be.
Where is the parking that is taken up by the building that the Legion use that under this memorandum of understanding, the parking is going to be designated at the senior center? It says in paragraph eight, "Once the new senior center is built and occupied, the Legion may use parking in the spaces between the new senior center and the new library construction zone for overflow parking for special events." Where are those parking spots? I asked that once before from you, and you didn't know.
The whole parking lot? The same parking lot? This whole parking area.
Then where is the seniors going to park?
The senior park.
So you're going to give them the whole parking?
The whole parking lot, no, really?
So how many actually parking spots between both this memorandum of agreement and the senior centers do you have?
I'm not sure.
What do you mean, you're not sure?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, in this memorandum, they're taking roughly 30 parking places that that building, where that building's going to be situated. And the selectman said, well, don't worry about that. You can use those parking. So that's in addition to what they have. And you have now, by downsizing, the correct number of parking just for the building, but not for this.
They don't have to take into consideration that memorandum?
I'm not asking you. I'm asking him.
The agreements are the select board, John, not with the powers.
But it's to do with parking, and that's what it's in here for.
But it's not to do with the senior...
But it's not to do with the senior center itself.
Do you have any other neighbors that you're gonna allow to park on this site?
No, because the Legion will have a key to that gate to use.
You missed the point here, because you're giving them parking and allowing them parking that you don't have there. That is designated strictly for the senior center. That's built for, don't shake your head, no. That's, that's built exactly, you downsized, and you have the proper parking places for that particular building.
John, it's not assigned parking. It's overflow.
Question, question on, for the senior center and the library. You have, how many parking spaces? Hundred and twenty, or give or take? How many do you actually think you will need ever for, for normal events?
Currently, we have fifty-five spaces in this lot.
Okay. In this lot?
In this lot.
Okay. And do you fill them up often?
No.
No, okay.
My feeling is that the Legionnaires signed that agreement. They can read it. It was their responsibility to make sure that it was enforceable.
How many spaces?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
I'm looking at this a different way. I'm looking down the road in the future, because this town has, in previous years, repurposed buildings. So twenty years, thirty years, say they don't need a library anymore, and to repurpose for another municipal use, or the senior center for another municipal use. Or there's more programs that come forward, but there's not enough parking. Where are you gonna make up the parking in the future if you're short now for the size of the building?
John, it's doubtful.
I'd like to address, I'd like to address that. I don't know if it's our position to get into the weeds. If, if the Legion and the senior center are both having a, an event on one night, someone's gonna have to change it. I think they can work together, saying the Legion has their monthly dinners, then we will not have a special senior center event for that night. So they can work something out. For us to get into the weeds and designate so many parking places that the Legion can use, I don't think it's our.
I wouldn't be saying anything if they didn't sign.
It's our position. I think we just have to comply, make sure that everything complies, and that's where agenda's going.
I wouldn't be saying anything if they didn't sign this memorandum of understanding to allow them to park in a parking that's been, the building's been reduced to comply with the zoning. And that leads into another problem, because when, when these contracts were signed with this OPM, that architect over there, wherever he may be, it, it states in there that they must comply with all applicable laws, rules, regulations. The, the architect under, under Article 4, Section 4.1, "The designer shall perform the work required under this agreement, included AIA document B201-2007 attached, is confirmed with all requirements and standards of the awarding authority, all applicable laws, statutes, ordinance, bylaws, codes, rules, regulations, executive orders, statutes of the come-off and political subdivisions of the federal government, the Constitution documents shall comply with all applicable laws, statutes, ordinance, bylaws, codes, rules, regulations, executive orders." And the same is written in the OPM's contract. Yet, they didn't follow their own contract. In fact, they came back later, and the selectmen just signed the change order, well, it's in a, for the contracts in a tune of $140,000. And they should have, this guy here, OPM, is supposed to be the watchdog to make sure everything is done correctly. I don't know what the hell he was watching, but he wasn't watching the rules and regulations. Because if, if the selectmen, right, just confirmed to order them to downsize their building because they weren't in compliance, this building, if they were on the ball, and that architect was on the ball, and now you got Mr. Lawyer here, who's supposed to advise them. Nobody's doing their job here. This building would have been under construction in the month of June. There was no question about it. No question about it. But the fox in the hen house wasn't doing their job.
Just one point about Colliers International. Just make sure everybody knows. This is not a Massachusetts corporation. As the contract says, Colliers International is actually based in Toronto, Canada. The stock trades on the over-the-counter market. It has a market capitalization of almost $2.5 billion, annual revenues of $2.8 billion, and assets under management of $25 billion. So this is big business we're talking about here. You know, we can have niceties here, but if Hadley has some type of claim against them under the Arizona emissions policy, I should go after it. It's our right and our duty.
Justin there, from 135, I can remember. I, I understand the rights and duties of that, and I actually agree with you. If we, you know, they, I see the idea that they filled that contract. But at the risk of delaying this project, the cost might be just as much. Is the expediency of it a little bit more economical at this point, especially since we talked about the rights and duties of this town? We've spoken about any sort of.
I don't think it's a reason to delay the contract, though. But I wanna make sure that the town does everything possible to scratch back any funds that were missed.
What's, what's your town limit on everything, John?
That's enough, okay, that's it. When we're not here to discuss the contract, Mr. Michkowski made his point. It's, they're, they're facts. However, they're not the planning board's jurisdiction.
Look, I was threatened by one selectman with her hand up already, if I didn't vote for this. And I was threatened by another selectman, if I didn't vote for this.
I never threatened anyone.
Yeah, you did last week when you called me. You said, if I don't vote for this, you'll never talk to me, and don't you ever call me again. Did you say that to me, or didn't you?
I most certainly did. And I hung up on you.
That's the first time it's been threatened by anybody.
I, I will give you fifteen seconds.
That's all I need. I just wanna say that the Legion members have signed in good faith a memorandum that we, as a town, will honor. And we also have a signed easement from them, and they were more than happy to do that easement with us with no problem. And we have both of those, in fact. We have worked very hard to get this project in compliance with the planning board and work towards getting the project done. Period.
Too bad you didn't work.
Is that good fifteen minutes?
Fifteen seconds. Fifteen minutes.
You wouldn't want me to go off to fifteen minutes.
No.
All right. From the lawyer, is there any problem that they say it's a Massachusetts corporation when in fact it's headquartered in Toronto, Canada?
With all due respect, I mean, I, I think we're just gonna try to focus on the merits of the site plan.
All right. Back, back, where were we?
Your question.
We're talking about parking. Oh, the, getting back to parking. It's not unusual for a business, the bylaw is a bylaw on two-for-one parking. You have to supply area for two-for-one parking, period. Whether or not you put in two-for-one parking, we've had, had several businesses in town that have been required to do two-for-one parking. They says, you know, we don't need that much, and we have to put that parking in. No, you don't. But you need to supply the area in case it's ever needed. In this case, they're putting the area in, maybe it's not needed for what, except by the, by the senior center people. It may not be needed right now down the road, like Johnny says, who knows? But at least at the present date and time, there's more than enough parking for the senior center and the library. And if the Legion uses thirty, twenty-five, fifty spaces, I don't know what they're gonna require, there's probably enough parking for everybody to coexist down the road. If it changes, well, it changes. We only can design within reason what we have today, and for the immediate, even the reasonable future of these two buildings and the Legion, I doubt we're gonna see a major change. Now, we're gonna get older, no question about it. We're gonna get more older people. But I don't think we're gonna be overwhelmed, okay? So.
Wouldn't you, you can't guarantee that.
That's right.
There's no crystal walls.
Only guarantees of taxes and debt.
The other issue is that the Legion and the senior center are in very different hours. They're evenings and weekends, and my weekdays are on the floor.
And even when they have a few holes.
Fifteen seconds, wait, quiet.
It's hard. Yeah, it's hard.
All right. I'm gonna have, I'll next. Attorney Reed.
I mean, I think we've touched on the two remaining outstanding items.
Right. Oh, landscaping. What was, what, what, now that we've done some different changes with the parking and the green?
The, the right side of this.
The two thousand square feet that were taken from the building, where did that essentially go?
Some of the west side of the building, it's the left-hand side of it, shrunk in the right-side direction. So essentially, where we had an outdoor patio seating area, that all got pushed that way and got decreased, that lies off the building.
Okay. With the two thousand square feet, was it turned into parking area, green space?
Parking area.
Parking area, oh, you added, actually added more parking area?
Well, we, I think we added, what was it, four parking spaces.
Okay, interaction's green?
Right.
Okay.
Where's your snow storage?
So we've got an updated letter that should have been provided to you from the co, I'm calling them co-interim DPW directors, just essentially reaffirming Marlowe's original letter, that the clearing and removal of snow is an operational issue that will be handled by the DPW. If removal is needed from the two sites, the snow will be hauled within a reasonable amount of time to the previously mentioned town-owned property. And it essentially just confirms the previously identified stance.
Just for the record, it falls into a, when Marlowe was still here, we mentioned that tomorrow, when the new director knows that this is not an aquifer. The, so the snow that's taken off of this site cannot be stored or dumped into the aquifer region. Okay? It's kind of a technicality, but he's gonna have to definitely put some plate that's not in the aquifer region.
Twenty years ago, we built two projects in this town, called the elementary school and the safety complex. There was plenty of room for snow storage. This is New England. I can understand why this thing was designed with no snow storage. And there's a cost of removing it, hauling it, and disposing of it. Otherwise, it could stay on site and melt.
Just one other question. On April 13th, 2016, Mel Overmeyer, managing director, sent a letter to the, is he still working there?
He does.
And he said, you guys are gonna protect the interests of the town of Hadley, reduce costs and maximize value, preserve the project schedule. Lastly, ensure construction quality assurance, which hasn't happened yet. You think you've accomplished the first three of those?
How is that applicable to us?
Well, we're talking about costs, and you're charging us extra for something that was supposed to be done in the first contract.
Hey, why you say, you, you put it in the bill for a hundred, sorry, five dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
I just wondered if you guys were gonna have any corporate responsibility to scrap Hadley's back a little, but because of their severance, that's all.
Yeah. I hope you don't mess up the safety complex.
Okay. If landscaping, for like shrubs, originally, we were talking shrubs along the property lines?
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, I think that's still the case, that the, the latest iteration of the plan was gonna have those arborvitaries as we had talked about, like over at Hopkins.
C200. Okay.
Where's the plan on, on the planning on the whole site? Everything? Where is it? The planning plan?
Oh, the planning.
C200. Get that on.
Yeah.
C200.
We don't have it on yet, but we got a board.
Okay.
Did you say you were bringing two full-scale?
Yes.
Plan sets?
Yes.
Maybe it would be good to.
That's a great suggestion.
Get them out.
Do you guys save them?
There's one here on the board. I haven't saved them.
The whistle makes noise on the microphone. If the whistle twines against the microphone, it really makes a horrendous noise at home and on the YouTube and stuff.
Is there any kind of barrier on the southerly border to stop the residents that live in these houses here to walk back and forth through this property? Like, see, they park cars out here, they park cars over here, and they walk back and forth through here. Is there anything to stop them from doing that? Like a four-foot on a bungalow line, four-foot fence or anything?
You're talking about the neighbors who live on.
Right, on the southerly property. That they don't park their cars in the parking lot here and use this parking and their friends and, and walk right through their backyards into the houses.
No, we, we kind of don't show offense, you know.
But that can probably be addressed with the police department. You have some signage, you know, parking out here. You tow the cars a couple of times, they won't park out there.
What about putting a four-foot fence down there?
I don't think that's a good idea. I think why towing the cars a couple of times, they won't park there. They'll stop. I don't have to get my car towed once for parking where I wouldn't, well, let the boss, I don't think.
Well, they're doing it now, so it's.
Yeah, but they're not towing the cars, I don't think. You tow them. Besides, it costs them 150 bucks to get their car back. They'll learn quickly, they can't park there.
Where's all the, the planning for the?
Here's enough, here's this, these are all the arborvitaries here. I believe the top, the shrubs on the top and the bottom are all arborvitaries.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, those are three or four people.
Where's the other, the other building?
See, where's the library parking? Any, Craig?
Do you guys have landscape plans on you?
We don't have a landscape, I believe.
We do not.
Do you have? Yeah, where's the library on here? The details?
The plan set. Yeah, you're in. So they just haven't stapled it together yet, but we have two copies of both.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It's in the back of notes.
That's no fence.
Do you have a landscape plan?
We do not have a architect at this time.
Why is it incomplete?
We're still in the design development stage on this project. We don't have a, a planning plan. There's an existing hedge row that runs along the northern property line.
No, whatever, the whole site.
The whole site. We wanted the complete, we said we wanted a complete set of plans for everybody. That was detailed a year ago.
I understand that. It's a development, I don't have a plan for you that's completed.
Well, the same complete, then.
Now, Jim, I thought we talked about, you know.
We talked about.
We talked about stormwater, we talked about site lighting, but there was understanding that they were behind the design schedule lines. So they would have to come back to the actual formal site plan approval once they had.
No, they, they're getting site plan approval tonight. They, this, this was well documented. We said we wanted a complete set of plans. We were approving both sets of drawings. We weren't approving one at a time.
We're approving the senior center and a pad site.
Yes.
At this point, with further review of the design, lighting, and signs of the library. But this is just like Home Depot, where we approved pad sites for other things as part of the original project. This is a site. This is a site plan. This is not a site plan.
I mean, if I could, I may disagree that while the site plan might not have all the landscaping on it, I think it still shows all of the open space, which is one of the zoning biol... zoning bylaw requirements that we have to meet. And so if you are going to have the library team come back for the lighting, et cetera, perhaps you could include landscaping on that as well. But as far as...
So, the thing is, you have some of it in here. I just don't understand why you're not... So, um, this page, SL one A is a lighting plan, apparently, for the entire site?
We have done lighting design for the entire site.
Okay.
For the library site.
Uh, this one up here is a parking summary and open space summary for the entire site. This one seems to be a drainage summary for the entire site.
Can you put this up there so you have that available? We don't know.
Do you find anything in there?
Okay, so, there is a lot of stuff here that does...
It's missing, landscaping. That's the only thing we don't have.
What was presented of the library way back several months ago? Is that still an accurate depiction of the library?
Yeah. Interesting, the floor plan and...
No, no, not the floor plan, but the actual, what the building would look like.
Yes.
So the building itself hasn't changed. It took a couple hundred square feet off of it for some reason.
I want to see the planning. Where is the planning? You don't have the planning plan here.
No, they don't have one. You said that. They don't have a planting plan for the library.
Set up another date for them to come back with it.
We can require them to come back with their planting plan, that's it.
Are you really putting plantings wrong on the building?
Foundation plantings, for the most part.
Definitely, yeah.
And then we'll have some, we may have one or two trees in the block itself and on the islands.
Is there any trees on the northerly boundary or the southerly boundary?
No.
No trees?
None of the southerly.
There's a heavy line of trees along the northerly boundary.
We're not impacting that.
But are they planting anything there around, behind there, anything?
Well, maybe go back to the green space.
Basically, it's...
What is this, just a bare building and blocked up?
The site along the southerly property line is, for the most part, in the library portion of the project, pretty much against the existing parking for this, for the library. And there's parking along the backside of V one vodka.
What's the front of the building going to look like? Just grass?
There are large trees out there now that are in the, in the public way, and we're going to maintain those. And so the canopies on those trees are so large, we're not planning on any trees, new trees in the front lawn.
There's no shrubs or anything that's going to be shown?
We're planning on some foundation planting around the building. It's going to be pretty limited.
Uh, but is that your footprint?
Yes.
Why was that so difficult for you not to have that for tonight?
Like I said, we're in design development and the landscaping plan hasn't been developed yet. We've really just caught up with our civil engineering drawings, and that's, that's the civil engineering drawings are the base that the landscape architect uses to develop the landscape.
I think all people here would agree there was some, there was some urgency to have everything together tonight.
I think everything is there except for the landscaping.
Yeah, right, just making that up. Right, that's typical of you.
Now, I, as I look through this, uh, yeah, there, there is... Okay, yes, there, there is a site-specific set of drawings in here, as in site-specific, but, um, you know, this, this has been frustrating to deal with a site plan when the project is not being designed, when the site's not being designed by the same people.
Can't you get them both together and say, oh...
And that's, I question why they can't do that.
If I, I mean, I think we have for the most part, as Mr. Dwyer pointed out, with the stormwater, the lighting, the layout, those big items we have. And I would just suggest that you condition approval on coming back before receipt of a building permit, on the submission and approval of a public meeting of a planting plan.
I'm not against that, okay? My question is, why couldn't these two groups get together and put something as simple as that together? Because this was depicted a long time ago that we wanted one cohesive plan. And site plan approval is specific on what a plan should be looking for. And for some reason, these two companies just can't do it. And everything that Mr. Michowski has said and everything that Mr. Sarzinski has said about these companies, specific to the senior center, I agree with. These guys don't do a good job. For whatever reason, the town is getting the short end of a stick. Again, it's not a planning board issue, but as a taxpayer, we're all getting taxed extra on this. No setup. Anything else?
Is that we supposed to vote on this when it's complete? Other plans come, they're complete.
We've had plans come in or we've put some...
Yeah, signs come in later and stuff like that.
Anybody, audience comments?
There isn't nothing in here. What do you got above, though? There's nothing in here.
Yeah, there is. John, here's your lighting plan.
Yeah, I asked for planning. Plantings...
Summary.
Not lighting.
There is not a planting plan.
All right. That's what I asked.
But that will go into as a condition. So again, it's frustrating. We've been going around with this for a long time. We had a lengthy extension to get it right, and, um, it's not. On the other hand, there are some other pressures facing us. Basically, costs are running, the costs of borrowing are potentially going to exceed the costs of the overruns on the design fees if we delay this. So I'm prepared to...
I will ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
You were prepared on the first meeting to vote for this.
So...
Before, before we make the motion, could Joyce just say a few words about how this thing's going to get resolved? Who's going to bring everybody together? You got a good whip?
I, I just think that we all will work together to get, I, I think as a select board, we've tried very hard to finally move these projects forward in getting, reducing the size of the building, working with the Legion, getting the lawsuit dropped that should have been started in the first place, and getting the swap of the lands taken care of. So I think, you know, all in all, I think we're all headed in the right direction, and I think that we can continue on that path. And I'd like to. And I think that, you know, we'll still have others, still conversations about what we need to get done.
So some of this reflects my personal opinion, and the others are free to join or not join as they see fit. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the project based upon the following findings. The intended uses are not prohibited by the terms of the bylaw and are permitted thereby. The planning board is disappointed that the first municipal building project brought forward after adoption of the updated master plan makes no effort to comply with the master plan, citing the proposed senior center as far away from the proposed library as the law allows. Because compliance with the updated master plan is not mandatory under current zoning, under the current state zoning act, this is not a basis for denying site plan approval, but nevertheless sets a bad example. The planning board states on the record that this project is not an example of good design under the master plan. The town of Hadley has secured an easement for access across the property of Old Hadley, Legion Post. Fire chief has proposed the emergency access between the senior center site and the Legion project be blocked by a chain between bollards to block through traffic. We do not know what authority the fire chief relies on for making a decision to block through traffic, but assume the select board would have such authority and could decide to block through traffic. We anticipate that any agreement between the town and the Legion for shared use of the senior center parking will establish a system to avoid conflicting uses and to provide for direct access between the parking lots when appropriate. We note that any future use of the old Goodwin Library building for other than library purposes will probably require that the structure be brought into compliance with current building codes, ADA regulations, and parking requirements. To the best of our knowledge, information, and belief, there is no allowance for the future parking needs of the old Goodwin Library building on the site, on this site, as the parking needs of the new structures require all available space. We consider that it is a mistake to proceed with the library senior center project in isolation and without consideration of the future needs of the old Goodwin Library site. But the planning responsibility for municipal buildings lies with other boards and is not a basis for denying site plan approval. This is full approval as to the senior center only. The library is approved as a pad site at this time and is approved for parking and drainage. The library will require further approval for exterior design, lighting, signage, and plantings. Work conducted in accordance with, this is the final plan set?
What's the...
What you emailed to us?
Yes.
Uh, that is VHB, and there are a multitude of dates here, but most, well, according to this latest issue, November twenty. Came out of fifth before that.
Is this the one that he's referring to?
Right there, yeah. That's...
Is this the one?
Yes. Everything's eleven twenty, correct?
Does that plan say that?
A couple of them were.
With a couple of exceptions.
Couple of them, yeah. Ninety-nine, ninety percent of them are eleven twenty.
Uh...
Except for three.
April fif- twenty-five, October twenty-six, and July sixteen.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so this is...
That.
This is that. Shingle collar to be approved by planning board prior to issuance of building permit. Copies.
Roof shingle collar.
Roof shingle collar. Proposal satisfies site plan approval criteria. Design features, including but not limited to landscaping, tree caliper, et cetera, will be considered, are considered to be an integral part of the approval design, and any deviation from the plans as presented to and approved by the board will be considered a violation of the terms of site plan approval unless the changes are approved beforehand. There'll be screening across the northern edge of the site where it involves cultivated land, arborvitiate three to four feet in high debt planting along the length of the field. Approval is for the following uses only: senior center, library conditionally. Landscaping installed, maintained, replaced per the plan. Landscaping shall be in place and verified by the planning board or a designated representative prior to the issuance of a permanent occupancy permit. Any outdoor lighting shall be shielded so it does not produce glare or spillover. No storage trailers, shipping containers, temporary or permanent storage structures, or any other storage facility not depicted on the plans are allowed. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, the Store Commission, Water Commissioners, and state agencies with authority. Any project changes directed by other boards or agencies must be approved by the planning board. One set of plans will be kept on site for the use of the zoning enforcement officer. A project will be reviewed for compliance by an independent consultant on behalf of the planning board at the cost and expense of the applicant, and the certificate of compliance issued by the consultant will be required before issuance of a permanent certificate of occupancy. And this shall not become effective until the decision is signed off on by the, no, the final set of plans is signed off on by the planning board. The applicant's engineer certifies the conditions set forth here and are noted and incorporated. And it is subject to appeal under provisions check forty A, section eleven. That is the motion.
Let me get it.
Do you have...
Second.
Motion of second before we vote. Is there a, do we have the colored rendering that we had of that?
I can get you, uh...
And the...
I know we nailed you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let me get a color, like, get the colored rendering of the, of the building.
Where is that building?
You want...
Multi love that? Yes.
You want this?
Yes.
You can get that.
Yeah.
Is that what that building's going to look like?
Yeah. Yes. That's what we like.
Okay.
And, yeah, okay, that's right. Okay. That's not part of this packet?
It's not, no.
Is there any rendering part of the packet?
No.
Okay.
I will add that a colored rendering is to be supplied.
How come we don't have rendering for our file?
They don't really supply rendering to the final. A lot of those, some do supply the, a black and white rendering of the building, but the colored rendering is like above and beyond, longer they supply it, because they do have that. We just, it was a part of the packet. Okay, that is the motion and a second. I don't disagree with ninety-nine percent of what you put in there, Bill, so I will not recommend or say anything I want to change. Any other comments?
I'd like to make one comment, final. I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I'm really pissed off that this guy, that guy, and the architect are ripping this town off and taking away money that could be used in this project and all our other projects. Totally uncalled for. The selectmen sat here and let all this happen and didn't do nothing about it. And that's why we got such a mess today. I hope the next project don't end like this. Comply with the law, they never came in once to verify what does this parking mean? There weren't none of these meetings. We go walking people that come in always tonight to verify things, what they can do. These big shots didn't come in here. They get paid too much money for that. They don't want to mess around, and then they wonder, wow, they're going to jack up their fees. That's exactly what they did. I'll tell you, in a corporate world, this guy, that guy, and that guy would be fired. And I don't mean maybe. I've been in the corporate world all my life. I worked on big projects. I have never seen a blunder in my life as these three people allowed to happen. So get on with the vote.
All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The fox.
What else we got?
Okay.
Oh! Yeah. Wait a minute, wait, we got one more motion made.
So I'll make the motion to find that the plan complies with the erosion incentive control.
Motion of second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any vote? Passes all three members.
You want them with everything?
We have anything else?
I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
David.
Morgan Madron. So, all in favor? Aye. Reading is history. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Starting your car or starting his car? Oh, no.
Uh, no.